Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Wadbury Board of Education's special meeting focused on strategic planning for the district. We'll begin this evening with a moment of silence. Thank you. Commissioner Adorno, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin this evening, I would like to have a special, say, a special happy birthday to Dr. Ruffin, and we hope you had a good day.
Thank you.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It has been an amazing... Good. All right. So, Dr. Ruffin will start us off.
Thank you, commissioners, and thank you for the birthday wishes. It has been an excellent day. And I also thank my staff for the celebrations today and all of the best wishes and the food and the celebrations. It's been very special. And this evening is very special also as we have our second meeting of the strategic plan. And I'd like to welcome Dr. Lemons here, and we also have Mr. Henry, who's also here with the Center of Fiscal Change, as we look and examine at the beliefs and the core values for the district, which will be led or voted on by the Board of Ed, but will also serve as a very strong statement to give us direction and to really make certain that where we're going is supported by all of the commissioners with a very clear pathway, and so that we can design a very clear pathway and steps to be able to move our district forward. It is, I think, appropriate this evening to be able to move to this next step because we've had an opportunity to see two drafts after the very first meeting that you all had with Richard, as well as it comes after an opening welcome that was sent out to all of the staff, was televised, was recorded, is still currently on YouTube. But I think what's important is it sets the stage for a year that still has a tremendous opportunity to impact the lives of our children in our schools. And I look forward to what we're going to be able to accomplish today. And I believe that our schools are ready, and I believe our staff's ready, and I believe they're ready not only for having a good school year, but for making bold decisions that will be based on our core beliefs and our values.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Welcome, Richard.
Thank you. Good evening. It is an honor to be joined by Robert Henry, obviously someone you know and love and respect probably as much as I do. I'm a big admirer of his work, and every opportunity that I have at the center to partner out in the field with Robert Henry, I jump into it. And so I'm happy that he's a part of this project. He wasn't able to be with us the last time because he might have been on a gorgeous island somewhere else in the world, and we won't hold that against him. This is a fantastic time of year. At the center, we get excited because it's kind of new starts, new launches. Everybody looks refreshed and coming off vacation, and students are excited. We get tickled by that. I've spent the better part of the last two and a half weeks running retreats with school districts across the state, and that's very exciting. But my own kids, where it really gets real. So I've spent the last couple of days kind of coaching up my rising senior. You can't coast this next year. You have to really be serious, and you have to really start, can you get this Common App done now, please? Can you write the essay for the Common App? Please start doing this. And my rising sophomore, who kind of coasts, and I say, okay, this is the year. You know, you're gonna, we're gonna really, you're gonna show you're a leader. And we've been having lots of subtle conversations where I'm sending signals without trying to put too much pressure. So I was checking in remotely with him today, his second day of the school year, and I send him a text, and I know not to ask, how was your day? And I've, it's taken me a while. So my question today was, what was the highlight of your day? And he said, finding out that three quarters, I knew three quarters of the students in my history class. I said, fantastic. That sounds great. Next follow-up, which tells me that he is the student of two educators, and maybe a little too big for his own britches, says, yeah, the teacher's pretty passive aggressive, though. I was like, that's the first day getting to know that. Oh, I've got some work with that one. He's going to be somebody's handful in school this year. We're delighted to be here. We want to, one of the charges that the superintendent gave us months ago when we began planning this partnership, she said that by the beginning of the school year, we want to have an articulated collection of core values. That's the first deliverable. The second deliverable is a longer term. Over the course of this year, let's develop the other elements of a strategic plan. You know, re-ratify to the degree you want to, mission and vision, add the core values together, partner that up, combine that up with the portrait of the graduate statement, and then put together the other elements of a strategic operating plan that can guide the district over the next several years. That'll take the better part of the year. But we're hoping that by the end of tonight, at whatever point we get to finishing this deliverable, you walk out of here and there's agreement in principle on all of the core values. So we've brought back to you, two versions later, of the started statements that were created in the room several weeks ago. We're creating an opportunity, if you look at those, mark them up, reflect on how they look to you, if there's anything missing, and then we're going to give you in small groups, one last opportunity to do some wordsmithing. So we'll put you in groups of two or three. We'll assign you one of the core values, and we'll ask you to make any necessary additions, subtractions, omissions. And then at the end of this, we will talk about each one, see if there's anything else left. But we walk out of here with agreement. There may be a preposition, an article, a tiny word that still might be in debate, and those are things that can be worked out over the course of the year. But we're hoping that around the room, there's agreement in the essence of every single one of these core values, and that in many ways, you're going to begin to empower the superintendent and her team to begin using and referencing and talking about these core values. I've got a laugh track. I like this. It's gonna be fun for the rest of the evening. Any questions about what we're trying to accomplish tonight?
Nope.
Okay. So I'm going to, well, as my colleague is passing out this yellow document, you'll notice there are three columns. The first column, the left column, is what you gave to me on each of those poster papers. On each of those poster papers, at the end of the day, we were last together, maybe seven weeks ago. We brainstormed possible core values, and we clustered them, and we identified clusters, then we edited them, and then we reported out of those edits, whole group. So I tried capturing what you had, what you had written on the poster paper, as well as any suggested comments and corrections and additions from the whole group. The middle column is my attempt to put all the ideas that were floating in the air into a kind of longer description, complete sentences, complete thoughts, trying to channel all the notes that I took in the conversation. Beyond what you had written on the sheet of paper, I had walked around every single small group. I listened carefully and captured notes from the whole group discussion, and I just tried capturing those as well as I could in the middle column. In the third column, you'll notice, these are just headlines and taglines. These mostly are kind of plucked from the sky. They're shorthand, and they're just suggestions on ways you could begin to communicate some of these more complex, more substantive ideas to different audiences. I'm not trying to sell you on these, and I'm sure they are better articulations, but just wanted to leave those for you. What we're going to do is really work on the middle column. We want to make sure that that middle column captures the whole that you want captured around each of these core principles. We want to make sure that we're not missing one of the core principles or values, and we want to make sure that it has all of the ideas that you had in your head and were thinking about when we were discussing things like respect. So I'm going to invite everybody to take a few minutes, pen or pencil in hand, and read through this document. You can read through all the columns, but pay careful attention to the middle column. And then we're going to open up a conversation in seven or eight minutes, where if you have any questions, clarifications, or broad reflections on the whole, we're not going to go into wordsmithing or editing individual values in this part of the conversation. We're just trying to get general reactions to the whole document. Any questions? Okay. Check back in in a few minutes. Powerful coffee.
These are actually, these are good.
There's one more. One more minute, and we're gonna open up a conversation.
Lina, what's your grandson's name?
Julius.
Julius. Julius. Oh, nice.
Now, before we open up the conversation, I want to acknowledge that as we're having this broad, high-level conversation, there might be ideas that get sparked that you'll want to carry into the conversation where we're diving in and you're editing and you're assigned to a particular idea. So it probably makes sense for you to know which value you're going to have responsibility for editing a little bit later before we start this conversation. So could I ask us to count off, this is really complex stuff here, I know, count off to seven, because we're gonna have two, and then we'll have one or two groups with three people. So, one.
Two.
Three.
Four.
Five.
Six.
Seven.
One.
Two.
Three.
Four.
Five.
Six.
Seven.
One.
So if you have one, excellence is the one you're going to be working on a little bit later. Two will be integrity. Three will be respect. If you had group four, you'll be working on equity. Group five, relationships. Group six, financial responsibility. Group seven, student experience. And I'm telling you that because as ideas seem applicable to the core value that you're assigned to, I would invite you to take notes in the margins and be ready to bring that into the conversation, and not just represent your singular viewpoint, but be representing ideas that came out across everyone in the room when we jump into that part. But the beginning, this is, I'm just opening up forward to see reactions, thoughts, anything that struck you. So this, at the beginning, we're not wordsmithing. We're just capturing what people were thinking. So floors open. Reactions, questions, wonderings. What struck you?
Should I speak into the mic? So as I look at the core value of excellence, I wonder if that is a core value we possess, then are we starting to put on paper what our actions would be if we held those values? So I think that following that value is some listing of some actions that we would do as a result of having those values. For example, we hire the best and provide ongoing support. We embrace and pursue continuous improvement. I believe those are actions that you take as a result of having a value of excellence.
So if, you're asking a question, but I think you're also making a statement.
Right.
And I just want to make sure we understand. So are you advocating that we separate kind of ideals from the behaviors that might follow after the ideals?
Correct.
And you're giving this example of excellence that maybe that last sentence...
Last two sentences.
Last two sentences, if we chose to, would fall away. It doesn't mean that they're not there in how we act. They're not, just not consistent with the values, but that idea would go across all of them, that we stick to the ideal and shy away from the action.
Correct. Because then we limit ourselves to only the actions and the statements.
Reactions from others that make sense to people?
Michelle?
I agree with Greg's comment in regards to the excellence piece. And when we're talking about academic excellence, and I'm looking down at respect and integrity, and I would like to make sure that we're beefing up those areas so that we're commanding excellence in regards to emotional intelligence and social-emotional expectations for all children, as well as academic excellence.
And what were the two specifically that you were calling out?
Integrity, which I believe was number two, and respect, which was number three.
Thank you.
I'm Karen.
I just, this may be picky, but I'm looking at equity. And at the end, where we say, let's see, last sentence, "and make bold decisions on behalf of serving each and every child," why are we using child as opposed to student?
And do you have a strong stance, one way or the other, or are you just asking the question?
Well, I'm asking a question, but I'm also, you know, what kind of rubbed me a little bit was that we have, we have children, we have young adults, and our school system, when we talk about student, that includes everyone. So I think a better choice of word to be student as opposed to child.
Just more expansive, covers the full range.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Other thoughts, questions, reactions?
I really liked some of the strong action words, like, you know, we take bold steps, we practice equity. So I really like that language a lot because I think it shows that there's action. So the more we can, you know, embed those kinds of, because it really, you just get a picture right away of, you know. So I think if we can, we can do that more throughout, or highlight those kinds of action, I think that really makes it strong.
And...
It's not a passive value. It's a proactive value.
And if we can use language that really captures...
Yes, right.
That energy, that's going to be part of that, and doing it throughout all of...
No, we practice excellence. You know what I mean? We're not just talking about it.
Other general reactions, responses that you want to share?
Something about practicing equity that bothers me. Because to me, practicing is something you do with a partner. Practicing driving, practicing some, it's hard for me to, unless you guys are gonna have to help me, visualize practicing equity. It's almost like promoting it or ensuring, but practicing equity, I don't, that kind of, I don't know if that makes any sense, but when I first read it, I asked, I said, how do you practice equity?
Well, to me, that goes back to my initial statement that we're trying to put the actions into the values. And so if we embrace equity, then we practice it. So that's the action that comes as a result of embracing it. So that's why, I agree with you, that the practice part of it is what you do as a result of having that value.
So maybe that does need to be big word.
Okay.
I'd have to agree with that, with what Janice is saying. I think we have to strive to have equity in our schools and not necessarily practicing, but making sure that it's there to provide equity to all students.
So I think this is a great example of just reactions to words. I think what we had mistakenly in our head is the notion of having a practice or something, like having a, we're gonna, we're gonna create a practice around equity, not we're gonna practice in order to get better over time. And so it's one of these ideas where we're writing something down, trying to capture what you were saying a few weeks ago, but you send connotations and create reactions that were unanticipated. So it's a great catch. Is there anything that you think we missed from the conversation several weeks ago? Is there any certain ideas? Is there something really meaningful for you that you were advocating for that you don't see represented?
Well, one thing I know that I remember people felt strongly about was, maybe that's part with relationships, relationships with parents, relationships, it's not just with students, but it's with the entire community, that we're not doing this, we're doing this in partnership with families and the community. So I don't think that comes across as strongly as we had talked about it.
Okay.
I think the one that stood up missing for me was the for what? And it seems we talked a little bit, a lot of it, last time about that this, all this work is for the benefit of educating students. And that's, so it's not just equity for the sake of equity, or respect for the sake of respect. It's creating that environment which becomes a positive educational learning environment, and maybe it's broadened for students and staff and community or whatever. But we're missing that it's for the benefit of the students.
And if this was, if this document were to be following a mission, vision, and portrait of the graduate statement that makes that clear, would, you think that would satisfy it? Or do you want, or is there something we can do in the text of these seven values that brings that out more?
I think the latter. I mean, again, I think if it's not there, it's not there. And if I've got to look for it inside the portrait of the graduate, then I've read too far. And again, I think a number of us discussed last time, if you use any of the analogies, you're not a custodian cleaning this room to clean... you're not a custodian cleaning this room to clean the room to make it clean, you're cleaning the room because this is an educational learning space for children.
You're trying to create the optimal conditions.
Everybody has a role in that, the parent, the bus driver, the teacher. The ultimate goal is the learning environment to be clear, and it's for the benefit of the students.
So it's, which answers the question, "to what end?" It's like, why are, why do these things matter? Why do these seven values, they're not just, because respect in and of itself is a great thing, which it may be, but it's to create the optimal condition. So we want to find better language or stronger language that keeps reinforcing that throughout. So we're going to put you to work. So you, you've heard some ideas, they're posted here, you're going to be in pairs or triads, working on, at first, the one that's assigned to you. So again, if you go back down in order, those are the, that's the one you have. If you were group one, you have the first one, if you were group two, you have the second one. And your charge is to make sure that any of these thoughts find their way as appropriate into that articulated core value. So you're going to have coming around another blue sheet, and you'll notice we've kind of gotten, we've eliminated some of the noise. You have just the second column and some blank space. And we're asking you to dive in, wrestle with the words, talk through the verbs, talk through the nouns, figure out, do we have too much action in this? Do we have not enough action? Is the language bold enough? Are we making the end game clear? Are we, have we clarified any language that might be confusing, so that it's sharp and it's tight? And if you are an accelerated group, and you complete yours, your obligations aren't just to your one, your obligations are to the entire whole. So we would invite you at that point, if you finish yours, you're like, "We've nailed this," to do two things. Run it past some other people in the room with that time that's available, and go join another group, and add your brilliance into that conversation. Because there, maybe they're struggling with a particular sentence or a passage that it hasn't, not easy to wrangle, and maybe you're going to provide the insight. So again, here's the, here's what we're asking you to do. Edit, tighten, expand, expound on the specific core value you're assigned. Make sure that it captures the whole of what Waterbury Public Schools wants for the children of this community. Capture all of the language that you are suggesting, you'll be presenting it a little bit later and explaining it to people, so you can get a little feedback. And then if you finish before other people are finished, go join in, or share and get some feedback on yours. Your job's not done once you're done with your core value. We're going to, it is 6:05, we're going to create 30 minutes of workspace. If everybody finishes before then, fantastic, but I'm assuming that with the work at hand, it might take 30 minutes to work through these and make sure everybody's confident you've got plenty of time to do, to do your one and then to add to others. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, go to it.
Michelle, are you one?
Yes.
Maureen, Maureen, you're one.
Doreen.
Doreen.
Where's number six?
I'll go, I'll go sit over.
I'll come over there.
Oh, sure, okay.
Michelle, we'll come over to you.
Nice. All right. I'll take that down with both.
Karen, I'm coming over.
Greg and then Ralph.
Hurry up.
Okay, we have excellence.
Okay.
So we have financial...
Financial responsibility. I was, when I was first looking at this, no, I just want to show you. I was going to make all these changes, change, change, change. It's just that right, change, no changes. I thought this was...
You thought it was okay?
I thought it was okay.
I didn't make any changes, Andy.
Oh, I changed these.
The only thing that's about, this is a syllable again, to use of child versus student.
Remotive.
That's only, that's the only thing.
Where are you here?
In financial responsibility.
Yeah, I saw child, and I said, "Do you want to say child, or do you want to say student?"
I think student.
Yeah, I was going to say that, absolutely.
But that's the only thing.
Yeah, because it's, it's financial, it's kind of cut and dry.
That's why.
I mean, I don't know what else.
I didn't see anything, I mean...
I like the stewards part.
Yep.
And the community resources, because everyone says you're representatives of the tax program. Effectively managing, advocating. Okay, we have to manage it, but we also advocate for more funds when needed.
Yes, yes.
For the assets to achieve our vision of equity and excellence for each and every student. I think it's right there, I think. Now we could have used all these, now we've got a customer.
I don't know, there is, so you're okay with that, just let me see what they want.
That's what I think. I think, I don't know if it else to change, I think.
I don't, I don't...
I think it's tight. And I don't know how it can be any broader.
So just going to put it, student.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't mind, if we think that...
We can probably...
So are you back for the...
I am back, but not, I am, I'm still traveling back and forth. But I'm back, I was back this week, we had a wedding on Saturday.
That's nice.
And I sent the law, I'm back.
Fairly, fairly.
Heard you dumped everything out.
I'll stay for tonight. I know, yeah, good. I love that. I love that. Let Paulin sleep on us, cool. So that's, yeah, we're going back tomorrow, I'll be back again for the meeting next week.
Okay.
It's, this summer, I said I was going to just, I was going to, a little bit, I'm going to every single thing that's obvious. I take some time, I have my family, so, yeah, so.
It's funny, because they did, where they were, maybe they should get out of this...
You get, your family come up.
They, yeah, well, I got ironic, and until we have that high expectation, so it's, in two weeks, he's heading, we thought it was going to be in France, he's going to Africa, and he will not be back until May.
Wow. Until when?
May.
Oh, that's almost a year.
I know, I know. Mr. Henry, we're, we're good.
I like the...
We were saying, that's, as I was showing Karen, when I was looking at, change, 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 change. I come over here, change, change, no change, except for this one thing that we talked about. Because it's as tight as cut and dry, I think. Karen thinks.
Yeah, we're, we're good, I'm good with it.
But that, you're very solid.
What, you think this...
In terms of financial responsibility, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it goes hand in hand. Part of the scale is trying to...
It's pretty there.
Because I, more with this. And that made me catch a hit.
Yeah, that's the responsibility, that's one of our responsibilities, but our principal ability is also to advocate for, yeah. In other words, if we had declining enrollment, we're not advocating for new school, unless it was falling down, we had to replace it. Shy away from the fact that if we need, if we need it, you know what I mean?
And also, you know, there's, what I was reading here is that, we still have that distinction of responsibility to look, look for grants, look for, you know, whatever we can get, so as to not impact the tax game, so that's, I don't...
It's, it's...
Yes, yes.
It's, it's a tough card to play, too, because, I mean, if people, I got a guy, every time I see him, he says, "You spending more of our money? Did you find a way to spend more of our money?" I say, "I'm spending everybody's money." It's a, no, it's actually a politician.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, yeah. And then he would say, "You all, you guys," meaning board and the central, "always say, if it's good for the children, then how could you say no?" That kind of thing. This is coming from the outside, not coming from the inside. Right.
How about if you just said, "We embrace equity by making bold decisions on behalf of every child."
Yeah, all right, so, yeah, so I was saying, so he's, we're trying to get him up here.
Usually... You say it was in Air Force.
He's in Air Force.
Air Force refers.
Reserve. And Northwest Reserve, well, just maybe has a week or two off to do that, but he's a mechanic, so they did, to fix, you know, he works on airplanes, or some...
Yeah, accept or support, we welcome.
Okay, I always pictured that every once a month, you went to the U.S., or you went to active duty for a period of time, so this is that period of time.
He has, last couple of times he has been, his assignment has been, like earlier, no, last year, he went to France.
I don't know if embracing...
The same thing, and stuff like that, so. When he said he'd be away, because he, you know, he has, I mean, he's not married, but he has, you know, he has a home, he has, he has business, he has other things.
So that's tough to do either, isn't it?
So, you know, we're kind of, but then happy with that, probably the gap would be...
Yeah.
Thanksgiving and Christmas, but...
Right. No, you don't come home for a weekend.
No, so we can still text them and stuff, you know, and whatnot, right? So it's almost like, just a point, you're going to be here. All right, do they want us to...
I don't know what's...
Oh, oh, all right, don't touch it.
We just, a lot of these, this is...
Imagine, it was students, Vinnie will have the... I couldn't call him Vinnie, but Vincent Palladino, he was a teacher.
Do you see, do you see that's coming as the latter?
He, his son does culinary, and he died.
Why is he calling him?
His funeral was the same day, it was in Saturn, last Saturn.
Members.
And I, I think it was in his nineties, I think it was just a... You know, but if you saw a picture...
I know, the name hits me for some reason.
But his son looks just like me, does culinary, so he died on the nineteenth, I think? And I was surprised, I didn't know anything about it until someone said, something, oh, Dr. Palladino, they said. Yeah, so, oh, you know what, Dr. Rockton, and Janice, at the last time, I said, "That's a, mine."
I never worked with him, I wasn't aware, he said he was ninety. He could have been, he could have been retired in thirty-five.
Oh, yeah, he's, he's, yeah, because this is like back in the seventies, he's talking about the old Crosby, that he taught, I think he taught, before retiring, taught Miller Police, but, but that was it, I was really shocked to hear, but I mean...
Yeah.
That's what, that's what's gone, I think.
Yeah, I'm always hesitant to look at the old bits, because, well, this reminds me of Anthony Bitterell. Now, Anthony Bitterell, educator, he actually lived in one, he never worked for one company.
Really?
He never worked for one company. He worked at Yukon, you know, what they call it, Edson, and Doggett Valley, and things like that. Very smart man, because I knew the family, I knew his father. And, just to bring it back to multiple education, when I was in, in high school, he was doing this student teaching. When I was a student, and I had over a class of science. When we were all kids.
I'm still in touch with some of my teachers, I had my Spanish teacher and I would say, "Oh, thank you." We didn't know, when we were there, we were in school, it's just a ten-year difference between, age-wise.
Yeah.
And, you know, we thought, because we, you know, students, we thought, oh, they're...
Yeah, you guys are ancient.
You're ancient. But then we really thought about it, I think it's when I got older, this is the path, I said, "Do you realize you're just ten years older?" It's just, that was the thing, we had, they recruited a group of teachers, and she said, "They were young, they just," we're talking about Nico Telle, Habs, Habsi, Correll.
Three?
Frank Correll. It was just maybe ten, ten years, but we looked at him as old.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And then everyone grew old together, but when we came in, I mean, I, when I came into, as a student, we had young people who were teachers, but we had some people that were old, that were, I'm talking about, at least they seemed older to me.
Yeah, yeah.
I had another one of my science teachers, was my father's teacher, and he was, I said, "That's impossible, he can't still be working." And I told my father that, and he said, my father's, "What teachers do you have?" And I told him, "This guy's name is Mr. Farrell." And I said, "I got this, this Mr. Farrell. Is he short and stocky?" "Yeah, yeah."
Same guy.
Yeah, and then he says, my father says, "Does he have spats on his shoes?" I said, "What the heck is spats?" Spats is these, it's like a piece of cloth that went over your shoe, that people used to wear. And I said, "No." And he said, "I think it's the same guy, he used to, he used to wear spats, and his name is, they used to call him Spatsy Farrell." And I says, "Oh, my God."
Oh, it is good. I had my forty-fifth class reunion Saturday, Crosby, we were the last class of girls graduating from Crosby. It was really good seeing everybody.
I'm glad you had an event, I had fifteen years came and went, nobody had any...
No one had it?
Nobody planned anything.
And see, I was afraid, because I had, I didn't hear anything, so I guess our class, but we had over fifty people.
That's great.
Travel, you know, there was one in California, one was, they all wanted to, and it's good because we're going to stay in touch, we're going to stay in touch, do another five years. Commissioners.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, hi. We're going to come over, we're going to come over and be nosing.
Oh, you were, we were coming to you?
We were, we were, we're done. We're just sitting here chit-chatting.
We were going to come over, but we didn't want to, like, knock what you were doing over there.
We're very sensitive.
I know it is.
To serving students.
I just want to wish you happy birthday. And I want to say, "This guy works for you, because you look younger today than when you interviewed."
Thank you.
Who's Reese?
I, that's it, right there. That's how you do it.
So your daughter's in town now?
My daughter's here.
So you got another party. You got another party going. You got another party. Did you write your statement? Got to write out your re-rating statement.
All right, give me the teaching handwriting.
Oh, that's right. Perfect handwriting, I remember.
Teaching and learning.
Did you guys get a piece of paper, too?
All right, so we just write out what we agreed to, right? What number did you...
Number six.
I think we would have number six, because it's financial, because they went and ordered.
Jackie, can you call this?
What do you want me to do? You're at the starting hours, it's probably going to drop.
How did you do it? You did number six and then, or whatever you... You did number six and then, or whatever you did.
Yes. Hire this guy, I want to hire this guy to do it.
That's the only blue we have, let's see what red.
You're the only one, that's red, parents will know yours.
Okay.
Put my paper back before I lose it.
I'm good.
So public education centers around, center.
Yeah, like the giraffe.
I like the passive.
Did you like it?
I do, I really do, and I think it's clean, like, I think you have to, to everyone, and say, is that the highest level of academic excellence in your teaching? And then say to students, is that the highest level of academic excellence?
When in turn?
No, you've just nailed both groups, like, that's the big line.
Oh, on the poster? Oh, we're supposed to write it on here? We're still wordsmithing.
Alright, I think we should ask Dr. Rockton.
So all systems and access.
Okay, yeah, yeah, well, you have to lead the whole decision.
Right, everyone. I can't just put it on the.
You want district versus system? You want district versus system? I'm going to put it in here in the years.
She wishes Karen could write it out.
No, she's not, because we're lying, because she's really high. We were afraid, we wanted to bite it in the middle of the meeting. Yeah, that's what, it has to be succinct.
Right, right.
Really? Oh, I have been thrown out of many of her classes. Oh, I was sent to the principal. Doc, I was, I listed, back in the day. I was a great student, I just buffed the system a lot, asked a lot of questions. Eighth grade. She threatened to impeach me as the professor. They had to quiet me down quickly. Yeah, that was. It was fun, ladies.
I would keep them over here, because that way you cannot, unlike before, we do that space, that we can, so just hold on to it, and one by one, we'll put them on that column.
Alright.
And we'll ask the truth, just like.
Sorry, I turned that wrong. Where does it go, right here?
Oh, we are?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
So we're going to restart in five, since people are grabbing a plate of yummy food. We'll wait till just when you have a meatball in your mouth, we'll ask you to explain something.
That's a lot of ambient noise.
I hate that sound.
Me too. I got to stay away from this.
If I were you, once they get this done, I would ask, I would get their communications team, whether they're outsourced to a firm, or they have somebody in the community, or some marketing agency, and say, "Create taglines."
Right.
Like the ones to the right, but don't assume those are the best ones.
Yeah, this is just started.
So I'll start, so Hannah, do you want me to do that, or do you want to start?
I'm done.
Are you done with that?
It's very exciting.
Yeah, we're, as a matter of fact, Will Clark, Lee Palmer, and I just finished the disclaimer. It's going up, but we have to go back to policy committee, because there's a couple of policies we're going to change. We're just posting it, we made minor changes, and we're going to post it. No, we're just making material. Yeah, but we do have to go back to running legislation. There's a couple of big legislations that we got to change a few words in.
My husband picked him up when he got out of work. I was like, "Yeah, he's funny, he's laughing in here, you got to come get him." He says.
I think I've been talking.
So that one stayed at school.
Oh, yeah.
They wanted to follow the teachers, or what if those teachers do like following things, or this. He doesn't want.
Oh, yes, I'm ready to go to my lover.
Charles, last quarter that meeting, I ran out of here, I went to the mud league. So I was like, "Okay, you got to start over on here." She actually took the class longer, and I just, I was, I used my.
Okay, folks, if we could have your attention again, please. So we are the point and the agenda, where we're going to try and have the reporting out. And obviously, we are trying to.
Trying to kill me.
But we're obviously trying to get your fundamental beliefs down in a way that we can all own them, and become the ambassadors to take this when the entire process is over. So, we'd like to begin by, one by one, going through what your new surgery looks like, or the patient after the surgery. And then, we're going to ask everybody else to either do a thumbs up, thumbs down, or be very willing to actually provide any kind of suggestions for improvement. Fair enough, simple enough, okay? So, how about if we start with numero uno, excellence? And which group? So if you'd be kind enough to go to our wall and talk us through it, please. Everybody can see, right, from there?
I worry that we won't get you on mic. So why don't you stay near mic, but we'll have, this is the visual reference, that makes sense, sorry.
As the song says, "Stay with me."
Alright.
So, we had the value, the value of excellence, the value of excellence, and we have Michelle and Noreen in the group. And we really focused on the idea of high expectations. But we wanted high expectations to define, what do we mean by high expectations? So, we came up with, Waterbury Public School System holds high expectations for academic excellence in teaching and learning for every student. We tried to get the teaching and learning in there, to bring in the second sentence, that talked about the educators committed to excellence as well.
Okay. Any, anybody else from the team that'd like to chime in? You in a good place? Alright, now it's everybody else's turn to take a look, try to determine if it conveys what your sense of it is. Because at the end, we're going to do a thumbs up, thumbs down, any feedback, please?
I would say that academic and teaching and learning seem a little redundant. So we could just say excellence in teaching and learning, instead of academic excellence? What do people think about that?
I'm seeing some.
High expectations for excellence in teaching and learning for every student.
Yeah, because when you say academic, and then you say teaching and learning afterwards, it's like you're saying it two times.
Anything else?
I like that.
Yeah, Richard, if anyone uses this.
That's what we had, but we wanted to capture the teaching and learning, so that it was, you know, without a net, without that second sentence, but.
Any other feedback?
I was actually struggling with this when Juanita and I were doing respect, and thinking about putting schools or district into any of the wording, because it's not anywhere on these pieces of paper. And system is very similar to those two things, so, and, and we don't usually call ourselves Waterbury Public School System, we call ourselves Waterbury Public Schools. So that was just one thing that I was thinking.
Well, we had two words, system or district, so we weren't sure which one to use, so you're saying not use either one?
I think you're saying it's more common, Waterbury Public Schools holds high expectations for excellence in teaching and learning for every student?
It's, it's our handle on Twitter, too.
We were struggling with system or district, was because we were trying to emphasize the fact that it was all the constituencies, that we were looking to, to want to have that high expectation for excellence. So whether you were a teacher, a student, someone who works in the cafeteria, someone who's driving the bus, we, we were just looking to make sure that all members of the community that support children understood that that is, that high expectation for excellence is in place.
Are these core values for the school district?
Yes.
So, like, just like the exam cars we saw with Amazon, Google, Aetna, they didn't name their company and their values, they just said these were their values. So is it necessary to name your company and your values? Because that's the overarching, we know these are our values. So there, I've seen, I've seen approaches where people have named the organization, and others that, that haven't.
We as we.
Do they name them in each value, or do they say, Waterbury Public Schools, we, 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 we? Usually, more often than not, it has some setup, and then, we, or something along that, some construction there.
And in this case, the fact that it's the first one, at least currently, it may be placed appropriately, and not have to repeat it along the way, you understand?
So one, one broader, I just want to capture this broader question, is it something that we can do in the next version? Especially if we're in agreement on all of the other words, we can create a next draft that has a construction that is symmetrical across, and, and figures out a way not to have redundancy in referring to Waterbury Public Schools. But just for the record, do you want to refer to the system as Waterbury Public Schools? Waterbury Public School System, Waterbury Public Schools District?
Waterbury Public Schools, like you said, Twitter and Facebook and our website. I mean, I do think we want to claim language, and then consistently use it.
Part of, part of the art of branding. That is consistent with what you're calling, yeah. Okay.
I am, I'm struggling with the four at the end, and to my point previously about, for the benefit of every student, the excellence in teaching and learning for every student. So the way that's framed now means, for the students, teaching and learning versus, I think what you were trying to capture was the, the teaching and learning, everybody should be learning, and everybody's teaching. But again, all that is ultimately for the benefit of the students, so my professional learning to benefit students. So I wonder if that could be changed somewhat, to take maybe the four out, or make it to benefit, or for the benefit of every student, or to benefit every student, or sort of like that.
Alright, to benefit.
I think it's, you're trying to capture a more global statement, but then it kind of ends with a more limited statement.
How do people feel about that, to benefit every student? Does that work? I'm seeing some nods. So it would read, Waterbury Public Schools holds high expectations for excellence in teaching and learning.
Period.
Period.
Period?
Period.
The suggestion is to benefit every student, so you're saying don't put that in?
I think we have two competing suggestions. One is that you change this phrase by making four on behalf of, to benefit. And another competing suggestion is, let's just lock this part off.
Because it's already inferred that that is.
I like to keep that idea of students.
Could you read that again? Could you read it again?
Yes. Waterbury Public Schools holds high expectations for excellence in teaching and learning. And then it would either be option A, to benefit every student, or option B, period.
In, in the, the statement where we said, we hold high expectations for students and adults.
adults and seek excellence in all our academic pursuits. In addition, we have committed to the highest levels of excellence for educators and that we hire the best and provide ongoing support and we embrace and pursue continuous improvement. You know, I, I think some of those are strategies. So I think if you listed, if you said Waterbury Public Schools holds.
High expectations.
High expectations.
Excellence.
Excellence in teaching and learning. Period. Then strategies become, so how are you gonna do that? Why are you doing that? Well, you know, we hire the very best to deliver quality instruction for all students.
Which will be included in the longer strategic plan.
Then we can have strategies that specifically address it. Because just to say we have high expectations for teaching and learning, you know, someone can say, well, I teach excellently, but my students are all failing. So, you know, you, you've got it. Then we define it with strategies that help us guide the work. So the strategies are not a part of the belief. The belief is that we have, we hold high expectations for academic excellence or for excellence in teaching and learning. That gives us some impetus to this day. So what are you gonna do about it?
Yeah, I'm gonna just hold on that last phrase, though, because again, teaching and learning for what? I don't think it's an action statement. It's, you know, it's not the next thing. We are in the business of teaching for the benefit of children. Everything we do is, should be for the benefit of children. So I don't, I think the period loses the whole context.
If the, so if there were a preamble, which is pretty common in a value statement that sets up that Waterbury Public Schools exists for the students of the community, et cetera, and here are core values as we serve students, would that address this? Or would you still feel like, as you said earlier, kinda want it woven through? So just trying to, trying to get us to a yes here.
Yeah. I mean, I, I go from.
I like the preamble.
Fox News, repeat, 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 and then people get it?
I like the preamble because otherwise, otherwise you'd have to tag that onto every value, for the benefit of students, for the benefit of students, for the benefit. And, you know, that's just gonna, the repetition's fine, but we exist for the benefit of students. I mean, that's, that's our core business.
But I, I see every one. I don't see any of the other ones that have for the benefit of students, for the benefit of students, for the benefit of students.
That's what I'm saying. But if we added it there, then why do we do this? And why do we do that? And why do we do that? And what? They're all for the benefit of students. Right?
I, I like the idea of a preamble or like an overarching statement.
Right.
Why, why we are embracing these things.
Okay.
And then they should be very succinct so that when I look at that, okay, excellent strategy and learning, equity, I, I mean, I think we, I think it has to be succinct.
So Dr. Ruffin, you wanted to capture the strategies where?
Do I wanted to cap?
Capture the strategies you mentioned, right? In terms of.
I, I, I want the strategies to come as a result of the belief.
Subsequently.
Yes.
Okay. So the point here is, we will consider striking the last three words at this moment, recognizing that there's still one outlier at least, and we'll come back to, to visit that. But at this point, the succinct statement is what we wanna capture as the statement on the excellence.
And I just captured a note for us, add preamble that reinforces on behalf of. Why are we doing this? And to make sure that students are the first thing that you see when you go into the list of value statements.
Could I ask, if we have a vision, is the vision the same thing as a preamble? Because in the vision, it could be that, you know, oh. So what's the difference between a preamble and a vision statement?
It could incorporate.
Yeah, it could. It might be that the preamble is merely a transition statement at the very top of this that brings you from the vision and mission into this document. It just, well, we'll look at those. But the idea is that one way or the other, we have to put at the top of these, on behalf of, for students, so that no one can say, why are you doing these things?
Right now? Okay. So what's the final read, Rich?
Here we go. Waterbury Public Schools holds high expectations for excellence in teaching and learning. And the other question that just remains is how we capture these? Will it have Waterbury Public Schools before the series of bullets or embedded within? And that, that we can, we can do on the backend.
Okay. Can we live with that? Anybody that cannot, raise your hand, please. And you stay off the class. All right. Thank you. So number two, integrity. Which is the team. All right? You're up.
Integrity. As an educational community, we are purposely guided by civility, honesty, responsibility, transparency, and empathy in addressing the needs of each student.
Could you read that again without saying, without, as an educational community?
Sure. We are purposely guided by civility, honesty, responsibility, transparency, and empathy in addressing the needs of each student.
All right. Floor is open for feedback, please.
Could you read the part that, the empathy part? That kinda led me a little bit.
Okay. So it's one second.
Yeah, yeah.
Purposely guided by civility, honesty, responsibility, transparency, and empathy in addressing the needs of each student.
So consistent, at least with the last conversation, I guess each student comes out to begin with, right? So Rich, can you? Any other comments, though, about the thoughts?
So that's, that's more awkward here than it was on the previous. You said, you could say in addressing student needs, it shortens it, but it still doesn't eliminate the, the idea. So the other one was for every student. So the main idea was already captured. Empathy in a, I mean, you could take it all the way back to the end of empathy, but there seems to be something special about in addressing the needs. So you have to tell us, what do you want me to do with the red marker? I feel like an English teacher.
I just, I, I just think it's, I'm not, I'm not, it's just too much. My reaction is it's too much. It has to be called a little bit. You know, I don't know if we need, as an education community, that might be up in the preamble or somewhere.
Yeah.
So we could say integrity, you know.
We're purposely guided by civility, honesty, responsibility, transparency, and empathy? Period?
To me, that's better.
Why are we using the word empathy? Because I, I hear that and I, what I hear is, maybe it's just me, we feel sorry, we feel sorry for our students, so we empathize for them.
My sympathy is feeling sorry. Empathy is understanding and trying to mindset.
But how can you, how can you empathize with what's going on with students? No, wait a minute, hold on. How do you know unless you ask what the student is going through?
And empathy implies that you feel what they feel. And we cannot feel what somebody else feels. We can feel for them, we can, I'm not saying we should feel sorry for them, but empathy implies that you feel what they feel.
Unless you've been there.
That's right.
I mean, if you've been there, then you can feel the empathy for that, for that student because you've lived that life.
That's right.
You know, you know what they're going through. So.
And, and Juanita, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I love to be able to empathize with our students, but I don't know what they're going through. I see things, you know, or any educator. And it's not saying it's a bad thing, but it's like, how can you? You, you know, how can we empathize? We can help our students, but to empathize? I don't know.
I wanna go back to the original, the, the original draft core value, which is about integrity translated through transparency and honesty. So like, we've deviated from that because this was about all stakeholders in the system being transparent and honest and holding some integrity. And now we're like changing that mean.
Any other comments? Thank you. Anybody else?
Just wanted to clarify in terms of empathy. When I look at the word empathy, I think of social emotional learning. I think of trauma-informed practice. I think of the things that we've tried to put in place where we're not, we're not judging students, but we're trying to find out, you know, why they're acting that way. So I, I see it as something that's very important to our school district that we've been trying to embed in our school district, more of getting to know these, our students and not, and not reacting and, you know, restorative practice, the circles, all, all the stuff we've been doing around social emotional. That's, that's what I think when I think of empathy. But I, I see what you're saying, but I don't, I don't know if it belongs there in integrity. I think, I, I didn't put it here. I don't know where I put it, but I would put it here.
You're saying, you're saying you're making a whole nother point, which is regardless of whether we could or couldn't hold empathy, you're saying, and I think this goes back to your point, that maybe empathy doesn't fit in the category of integrity.
Right. That's what I'm thinking.
So what do people think about that? So it would be something like, we are purposely guided by civility, honesty, responsibility, and transparency.
I think that's.
Yeah, we, we felt that the empathy was a missing element of the system of what Liz is saying, not that people can't relate or have been there, but if you're not even gonna try, I mean, we have a president, for example, who believes he's being honest and truthful. That's his honesty and truth. He doesn't give a damn about the condition of anyone else. If you're walking in not giving a damn.
Better to club the table.
Give a damn.
No.
Your truth is not framed by a desire to be empathetic. I can't help what I was born into and what my color is, but I can open my mind to be empathetic and open my truth to be empathetic to what I am chosen, my profession to work in and be. And to not have that as a value, then you've got a lot of different truths out there.
Yeah. And so part of the discussion is where it might belong, right?
Oh, boy. That's where, nowhere near respect.
You guys did miss, you missed, by the way, that we actually took out integrity because we thought it was redundant to opt for.
Right, right.
And so you could flip that around and leave integrity and no honesty, but that was one attempt to.
Well, you have it up here in the header, so you don't, it's redundant to define a word with the word, right?
Our educator told us that. You can't use the word in the definition.
Maybe empathy belongs more with respect.
Respect. I think a couple other people were saying that same thing.
Action under later, start the action steps. Empathize, put, put that in here as an action step or a statement.
So how do people feel with, kind of pushing empathy toward respect? We'll pick it up with that one. Eliminating as an educational community, we're purposely guided by civility, honesty, responsibility, and transparency.
Period.
Period. And the idea is we try not to lose this idea of empathy somehow, framed some way, but it falls under the category of respect. And it may be, the, the kind of essence of it might actually be showing up there. We can check that. And this would mean we're lopping off this beginning and we're lopping off the needs of students. People, is that, did I capture that correctly? Before I put the red line through? I'm told that this creates trauma for kids, you know, like in new ed, education departments now, we're re-teaching English teachers not to, you know, use a different color when you slaughter someone else's paper, but.
All right. So.
We can, well done, sir.
Can we make sure that we capture needs of, the needs of students in that preamble?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes. It will be, I think, captured there for, for all of them. We'll see. All right. Any unreadiness? Respect. And that's without Aretha Franklin.
I guess.
See? There you go.
It's getting correct.
This is it.
Someone needs to.
We'll sing backup for you. Suck it to me, suck it to me.
Okay. So, respect. We are committed to embracing a diverse community.
Period.
Period. But now somebody wants to put empathy in there somewhere.
No, it's just. You don't have to.
That's nice. I kinda like that.
That's concise.
Embracing a diverse community. Okay?
Be careful, you might have, Waterbury might have to pay a royalty fee. Cut it off at 14 seconds.
Everything is not simple with your state. That's right.
Okay.
No, I, I think that it's, I mean, that's huge.
Yes.
And then the action steps and what do we do? That, that gives us some oof to go and say, and so this is what it means.
Okay. Any other comments around respect?
It also has some symmetry to now what the other two have. We're starting with we. We don't have the on behalf of students because it's gonna be up in the preamble.
Okay.
Well, that was fast.
Numero cuatro.
Nice job.
To the point, that's Juanita.
Oh, that was Juanita.
That's Juanita. All right.
Another we here.
Equity, which is the T?
Darren.
Darren.
Darren is the T.
Okay. We struggled with the second word because, you know, we had practice up there before. We had a lot of sentiments going on to promote to, we weren't quite sure how to do it other than we're, we're not so stuck on cultivate either, but we were trying to get to the point where we grow the conditions or we create the conditions where it happens. That's, that's where our heads arrive when we say cultivate. Cultivate equity in all systems, lead to bold decisions on behalf of each student. Obviously, this can get taken out based on.
Did you just say it a little louder, Darren?
Yes. We cultivate equity in all systems that lead to bold decisions.
Is bold decisions an, an action?
I'm sorry?
Can bold decisions be an action?
Could be guide.
That guide, bold decision.
Well, we, we were, we were, we were trying to balance, because it's not just the systems where the equity exists, it also has to be in the actions.
Okay.
And the words. So that's where we kinda, that's where I got kinda caught with systems, too, because I, I didn't love systems, but if, it wasn't just the systems that led to the decisions, it was the systems, the mindset. Practices. The practices. So we did struggle a little bit with, is it just systems that lead to bold decisions? bold decisions, or is it systems and mindset that lead to some sort of act? And the kind of guys come there, to be honest.
Turn that around and say, we cultivate, we cultivate equity in all, in making bold decisions in all, on all of our systems, or something like that. It, it doesn't quite get at the way it's written. I, I like the concept though.
I object to the word "systems." I don't know why. Just like districts or schools.
The original, like, systems. Systems, processes, structures, policies. It was, it was too much before. By making bold decisions.
Mm-hmm. That could work.
Yes. Greg, you just said it.
By making bold decisions.
Cultivate equity. By making bold decisions.
By making bold decisions.
So just, as the cold outside reader, you can make all kinds of bold decisions that actually do harm to equity. So, I mean, we could just imply with leap of faith that saying that sentence means, obviously, we're talking about the kinds of decisions that lean in that direction, but just, that just jumped out to me when you were saying.
What if we said, the bold decisions we make cultivate equity?
Turn it around.
The bold decisions we make cultivate.
I think we like the word bold, but it's not quite fitting here.
No, no. I know you liked it, we tried, we tried to keep it in.
Ethical decisions.
Do you ensure equity?
Well, we, we debated that. We debated embracing, ensuring, are we creating the environment? Whether this grows, whether this is fostered.
It's moral, too. Equity's morality.
Can you ensure equity every moment, every day? Probably not. But can we cultivate the environment that could do so? That's where we're, that's where we're at.
We can embed equity, so we can cultivate equity as a positive.
I'm, I'm wondering, as we're puzzling over that, what was the react, what was the strong reaction to "systems"?
I kept going back to schools, districts, and systems, and, and when Juanita and I were going back and forth, and we're, we're saying what we value, and that is what we are. That's not necessarily part of our value system.
So I was assuming, and this is a good thing, this is why, having multiple people react, I was, I was assuming that in this place, we weren't using the word "system" as a school system, as the collection of systems, human capital system, budgeting system, talent management, disciplines, like any system that defines how you do work.
When I saw systems, I thought all departments, all places within our multiple systems, our conglomerate of systems within the city. That's the way we interpreted it.
And you went at "systems" as opposed to what a lot of people are talking about now with "mindsets"?
Yeah, well, there could be, well, that's, so going back to the original idea was, there were systems that led to bold decisions, which was really also getting at the mindset idea. So, it was, they didn't really necessarily connect, but we understood that you have to cultivate equity, not just the systems, but also in mindsets, that lead to some sort of practice, action, systems change based on that mindset, based on that system that you create. So maybe the, the mindset creates, helps create the system of equity. That would, that would make more sense.
Wasn't that, you want to make bold decisions, I don't have the words for this right, but through the lens of equity or with an equity, equity mindset or something like that?
Mm-hmm. That gets across. That carries weight, right? In terms of flipping it, with the bold decisions being made with equity as the focus.
As the driving force.
That might.
Or as the lens. As the lens.
I can take this all.
I'm not sure how to word it, but it's a big one.
Yeah. That's why I think we're, the most likely, it's like, are we cultivating an equity mindset that leads to bold decisions and policies?
Our decision-making process.
Right? That is equity mindset?
Can you take another stab at it, please? You started with bold decisions leading to.
Yeah, and I think it's somewhat just reversing the sentence a little.
Right.
So reverse it, please.
Do we examine systems with an equity lens? I don't know, that doesn't sound like it.
Well, maybe you want to deliver more than just examining, right? The idea is to execute, to achieve.
We do. We want to get to the, we want to dig deeper to root causes. I mean, we don't, we don't want it to just be a lot of words, but we want it. We do have to examine our systems for equity across the system.
And deliver on the concept.
Make all decisions to, 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 to change anything that we see that doesn't lead us to equity, but that's a whole bunch of verbs.
So are we just saying the more concise? Decision-making process embraces equity?
But is there a value, like, is there, is our value about decision-making, or do we value equity?
You value equity.
Well, our decisions are based on, don't we use equity?
But all our values got our decisions.
But we want our culture in Waterbury Public Schools to be about equity.
Well, there you go. Let's take what you just said.
We want to change our mindset here.
Stay with what you said.
A culture in Waterbury embraces equity. That's what you said, right?
Take the shots. You can even put it down here. There's a potential competing, you get combat pay for tonight, Darren.
Yeah, it could be in our decision-making, it could be in, I mean, any other way, but we want a culture, but Waterbury Public Schools want a culture that embraces equity.
Achievement, fairness, opportunity.
We create a.
More than great.
I don't see equity in the definition for equity.
Practice. Promotes.
I saw that.
I like the word practice, although some people did like it.
So we create a culture?
Equity that embraces, go ahead.
You're struggling with embracing, but.
You said the culture?
Yeah. Waterbury Public Schools wants to create a culture that embraces, or if you don't like embraces, promotes equity, minutes our mindset, that's what we're going to be. So we, how do we put that?
A culture of equity.
So I have a thought. I think we're on the cusp of something here, and what might make sense is to take a few minutes to get everyone thinking about what's here. So I would ask you to either do some individual writing, or turn your body to a colleague, and for the next two minutes, talk or write about what is it that we really do value here around equity, and see if you can find some words and language to bring back to this, but allow people to process, gather some thoughts. If you're someone who likes to just write and think, write. If you want to talk it out for a couple of minutes, turn and talk with someone for two minutes.
I like that. Yeah, that one, just put up there. I like it.
We create a culture that embraces an equity mindset. There you go.
People are saying, we don't need the time to process, because we didn't.
Imperiments.
You think what's missing in that is that deliver was also just structural racism. You can try to evolve the biased training in the world, and if you throw those people into an equitable system, it doesn't make the system equitable, it's. Policies, processes, structures do matter, along with culture.
So that's, that's a big part of our work. And yet it's hard to say exactly like we mean it. Shortness, right.
Embraces, I don't know, imperiments, equity, something? Or something simple, like, we promote equity in our culture, systems and structures. And it basically says, it's not everything.
If you had the equity mindset, if you had that.
So just a, we were over to the side, just some reactions from the outside. You don't have to buy this, but just reactions. Equity isn't going to be changed in an equitable system just by changing mindsets. Like, for example, you could run everybody in the system through implicit bias training, and you drop them back into an organization that still has structures, policies, culture, it won't, equity won't just suddenly appear magically. And so, I think culture's a big part of it, but I do think some of those other pieces are part of the honest truth of how do you get to equity? System, structures, culture, mindsets. And I know you don't want a laundry list, but it, and may, and somebody had the word "promote" earlier, and maybe there was, people had some diff, had some reactions to it, but you could do something like, we promote an equi, we promote equity through culture, system, structures, and policy.
Okay, I like that.
Because you're still not at the action, you're just saying, we, we're promoting it, and, and we know it has to happen in all these areas, but that, I'm not committed to that myself, I'm just trying to get, I'm trying to push you along further.
I like that, I just, I hesitate on listing all the things, because then why not procedures? Then why not guiding documents? Shouldn't it just be in our actions or?
In everything we do.
In everything we do, something like that, because if you start listing that, you're like.
We promote equity in everything we do?
Yes.
So we'll see how this looks when the esteemed Robert Henry writes it up there with that elegant handwriting.
You see, now you did, that does service.
But our system is made up of the systems, the structures, and the policies. That's what our system is. If we're going to, if we're going to challenge equity, we're going to embrace equity, it comes through those systems that lead us to action. So I, I don't know. I'm still struggling with that one.
It is. So, the, the current, at least based on what we said last, is we promote equity in everything we do.
And I think Darren might have had an adjustment to that he was advocating for softly.
No, I was just repeating, he was repeating his first statement.
Oh, okay. You still like that one?
Well, equity in all systems.
Well, it's, it's the same thing, you cultivate equity in all systems.
Or cultivate equity in all that we do.
In all that we do.
So, because there's, there's some people in the room that don't want systems, because it connotates the district, and then we don't want the other things that would, the other categories beyond systems, because it creates a laundry list, that makes you wonder why the other things don't, Pierre?
And we could also turn it around and say, we are committed to addressing inequities in our system, or promoting that all people have equitable access.
Okay. It's been a tough one. So.
Darren, I like what you just said there, there, say about equitable.
All right, one, one last.
We are committed to creating an equitable.
We are committed to creating an equitable.
What do you think?
Is that what you really mean?
Towards the end of the meeting, it wears people down.
Equitable.
Well, he said equitable.
Culturing.
That's part of the work that we have to call equal.
All right. Let's try and call us among, one is, we promote equity in all that we do, and the last one we talked about is, we're committed to creating an equitable educational system. And we started with, we cultivate equity by making bold decisions. So, anyone has somebody's fancy?
I would need some time to put that together.
Say the one that you said first.
The fir, the first one is, we're committed to creating an equitable educational system.
That's the first one?
That's, well, the very first one, understand? We cultivate equity by making.
In all, in all systems.
In all, without the, we cultivate equity in all systems that lead to bold decisions on behalf of each student.
Keep that one, and then, then we keep thinking about it.
Okay. So. So we're working off the first one. Yes? Going forward. All right, we cultivate equity by, okay. And without the, on behalf of each student? Because we are incorporating that in whatever header. All right.
So can you read that again, Robert, just so I know what?
We cultivate equity in all systems that lead to bold decisions, period. Right? We cultivate equity in all systems that lead to bold decisions. Yes? We're holding, but this is the best at this point.
So do we want to go to the others, then come back to this one at the end?
We will.
Brilliant, new thing.
We will, it's about over.
Just a question. Do we cultivate equity, or do we cultivate the systems to realize equity?
So, I'm going to turn it around, help advocate. So, instead of posing the question, what's the version you think is stronger?
So the version, what was the last thing we said?
You get a clean sheet of papers.
The last one here? We are committed to creating. Cultivate. Promote, cultivate is the first one.
Okay, so, I was proposing that we say, we cultivate systems to realize equity.
Melissa left the room on purpose? Oh, your, your, your system is back. So. We'll leave it with a question mark, and then we're going to come back before you. All right? right? All right, relationships.
Okay, number five, relationships. We were trying to eliminate those words like human enterprise and human relationships. So, you said high-quality relationships are the center of public education. Pretty succinct, but you may want to change it a little.
You wanna add equity?
Empathy.
High-quality relationships are the center of excellent education. When we just say public education, that's like we're saying public education versus private education, we want great education for all children.
High-quality relationships are the center of excellent education?
Something like that.
Okay.
I didn't, yeah, I did. High, meaningful relationships, high-quality relationships, I wasn't sure what you were getting at with high quality, because then you have to determine what that really looks like, and then at the center of excellent education is a little too close to like, the last one we had, which is students at the center. Student experience at the center, so I, I didn't want to get the two, either the students at the center or the meaningful relationships at the center, it's just, it's just the use of at the center that could be, could be confusing, or is it that the meaningful relationships will lead to excellent, so?
Or essential to.
Or essential, lead to. Or a foundation for.
High-quality relationships are the.
Essential.
Are essential.
Are the foundation.
Or foundational.
Foundational. High-quality relationships are foundational to.
I like meaningful better.
Meaningful.
Meaningful relationships.
You okay with amendment?
Meaningful relationships are the foundation of.
Meaningful relationships are the.
Foundation. Are foundational.
Foundation.
Are the foundational.
Are foundational or not?
You have to say are the foundation or are foundational.
Meaningful relationships are. Foundation.
Excellent education. Or high-quality education. Put high-quality right there. High-quality education. Right, Neil, does that make sense now?
I think what the, if you want a modifier, the beauty of not using excellent is you have an entire category of excellence.
Right, right.
Right. Okay, meaningful relationships are the foundation of high-quality education. Yes? Going once?
Twice.
Twice? Okay. Twelve dollars to the man in a hat.
Financial responsibility?
Financial responsibilities.
Well, first, first I want to say that tonight has been a learning process for me, as I sat with Commissioner Harvey, we said, this is pretty good, we don't have to change anything. But listening to everybody, now I realize that we're putting all of these on some kind of a keto skinny diet. Almost as I stand here, I can make changes on the fly.
Yeah.
The only thing that we changed was, at the bottom, where it said child, we put student, okay? That's what we did, because we, we talked about how it was a responsibility, whereas this is a cut-and-dry responsibility of, of our board and then our, our district to do this work. We talked about how it was to the point, it was non-emotional, it was very cut and dry, but as I look at it now, with Commissioner Harvey's permission.
Go ahead, no, go.
She worked on it with me. I'm gonna read another one, a, a shorter keto version of this. All right, so, and then we can change all this, but anyway, I have now, after doing all this, little change, I, I was sitting there listening to everyone, and I have here, we act as stewards for the community, for community resources, managing our assets to ensure equity and excellence.
So, read that out to us and I'll, I'll mark this one out, because you were following the pattern.
Well, okay. We act as stewards for community resources, managing our assets. To ensure equity and excellence.
To ensure.
Period.
Period.
No.
Oh, you're ex-actions, you got rid of this, sorry.
I noticed that as I was listening and going through all this, each and every student pops up on a lot of these, and it's kinda like, bleh.
Okay.
So, that's, that's what I have.
Any disagreement? Any suggestions? Thank you, sir.
Steward is spelled wrong up here, but that's okay, we can get it from there.
Yeah, S-T-E-W-A-R-D.
I thought T instead of a D.
Okay, well.
S-T-E-W-A-R-D. Oh, there it is.
All right. I was just, I was just gonna a little wait. This is an example of an improving or, that is a continuous improvement organization, right? Midway through, you're already editing it based upon the feedback that you've gotten in general, not even on yours.
All right.
I think this one is gonna require expensive, lengthy dialogue, so. So, we had student experience. We provide students quality learning experiences aligned to our portrait of the graduate, which are necessary to ensure personal growth and the ability to thrive in the world beyond school.
This may be totally out, but I'm thinking, given this whole discussion today, that that kind of concept, I see that more in the preamble now, because all these values are to ensure that, so I'm not sure we need student experience as a, you know what I'm saying? So, after all these values that we've listed, that we've talked a lot about the student, and I think to ensure personal growth and ability to thrive in the world beyond school, that's why we're, we're embracing these values. So, to me, that sounds more like a vision statement, or why we, why we have these values.
So, your suggestion seems to be that we really do not need this at all.
Right, because, just my, just from this whole exercise, the student experience is what we're, we're using these values toward.
Okay, all right, any other thoughts?
So, if we don't do the student experience as one of the.
Values.
As one of the values, then it has, it has to be the root of the preamble.
That's right.
If we don't use it as a value, it has to be what drives all of this.
They need a visual.
Yeah. Absolutely, so that's the hub.
So, it's like inverting it and using that as the preamble in many, or incorporated?
So, I'm picturing, you know, student, to use that, then student experience in the middle, and all these values that are driving the student experience.
Okay.
Because that, I really like that, the ability to thrive in the world beyond school, I really like that.
The, the thing that strikes me is that much of this statement is a, is a rationalization for why you have the portrait of the graduate in the first place? And in some ways, it could be that transitional statement that takes you from the portrait of the graduate into the values, but I'm just wondering what's, like, because I know that there was, there was a great deal of energy six, seven weeks ago around this one by, by a group of people, I just want to make sure, are there people with any counterstances to moving it outside this set and into the preamble or to the hub or to the root of it?
I guess I have another question, are we gonna redo our vision and our mission?
I think we, I mean, I don't want to be the only one speaking, but to me, I think we have to look at it now.
Yeah.
Against these values, see if we want to look at it, just everything.
Because if we do, I agree, I agree with you, but that's the reason why we're doing it.
That's our vision. I really like it. It's not, it's not a value as such.
So, are we at the point where we're considering dropping this last entry and considering working it through either the vision or part of the mission as a way of capturing it through the portrait of the graduate or anything else that we're gonna put forth, yes? Any unreadiness with that? Yes, sir?
I just, I just wondering, I have a question, when you put things in the preamble.
Yeah.
Would people maybe have a tendency just to skip the preamble when they then get to the bullets, and if it's out of the bullet range and it's up in the preamble and it's just words?
I will argue that people will read the preamble and leave the bullets as well, I mean, so, the idea would be to make it succinct enough to capture, and then, yes, the bullet will follow naturally, try to make it seamless enough, all right?
Okay, I'm good.
You've been easy today. Okay, Melissa.
Not to throw a complete wrench in all of this, but Noreen said something very interesting earlier, so you can blame her. We don't have anything in here other than student expectations in regards to portrait of graduate. The community is familiar with portrait of graduate, they've come to multiple, multiple nights where we've talked about it and, and gone through it with them and, and found what, what we think a student needs to know, be able to do, so on and so forth, when they graduate from our schools, and that's not in any of this except for right there, so.
And just a quick reaction, the, because I've seen other districts that have done this, that the way some folks have, have solved that problem, and it might not even be a problem, is you put them close by together, that, that, the, the values say, who are we? The, and the portrait of the graduate says, and here's what we're gonna achieve on behalf of kids, given what the world demands of them going into the future, and that because of this, we're gonna make these decisions, here's what's in our strategic plan, it's all of that comes to, it's how they fit together that will make the, the, the big argument, along with, you know, the bigger vision statement, the mission statement.
All right. So, we'll have an opportunity of packaging it in a way that try to capture what we're getting in terms of, yes, these core values and the ability to make certain that follows through from the vision, et cetera, all right? So, we coming back to equity? Well, might as well get you while you're exhausted. Any thoughts? Go ahead.
Promote equity in policy, practice and allocation of resources.
Okay, sounds, covers a lot of the base.
And was the last one, policy, practice and distribution of resources?
Promote equity in policy, practice and allocation of resources.
Any reaction? Any reaction for it? Any reaction against it? Any unreadiness?
Allocation of resources, bottom.
Okay, why?
Because that points to a responsibility that the superintendent has. So, I think it should be, I agree that it should be an, you know, we should have equity of, it points to, that's, that's the superintendent's responsibility, it's not the board of education, so I'm just wondering, we want it to be inclusive for everybody.
Yeah, but I think you're trying to create a document that's inclusive.
Yes.
And therefore.
When we say allocation of.
Of resources.
That points right to the superintendent.
Dr. Ruffin, any feedback to that?
Well, the superintendent doesn't have a lot of resources, because the superintendent's resources comes from the city, the state, federal, and it comes down to a holistic approach of being able to allocate resources equitably across the whole district, and so, you know, the board has a budget and finance committee, the board has a policy committee, the board has a personnel committee, and so it really trickles down to the policies and structures that the board is responsible for, you know, being able to, you know, support the superintendent, when the superintendent says, we need to allocate more resources to this school because this school is suffering, but ultimately it comes through the various board committees. So, that's, that's kinda how I see it, because the resources that, that we get in the city of Waterbury has to go through the mayor, the commissioners and the board of Alderman.
So, it's a process.
For the allocation across the system.
I also think we can't bring equity down to the level of resources, because if, a lot of people shift their mind to finance to, but we're talking about social capital, racial inequities, I mean, we're talking about a broader social fabric, not just allocation of finite resources.
But do you believe that resources should be part of the equity mission or not?
I, I do, but that, that comes in our actions, like, if we believe in equity, then we allocate resources in an equitable manner.
Okay.
But it goes beyond just resources.
It goes beyond monetary resources.
Correct.
What really strikes me in that one is, that's the human resource part, which is really where I want to get in, but, because that's where you can allocate fairness and equity across systems when you have inequitable systems for where you allocate and you place staff across the system, that's the huge thing, it's more than money.
Right, correct, correct.
Okay, so what, when we say allocation of resources, Liz, what were you thinking of them?
I was actually.
What was in your mind?
I, I was just thinking the word from, it's already there in that box, so I just condensed it. I, I agree with Craig and everything, I, I was thinking broadly of resources in terms of, you know, all the resources of the community, not just a specific budget.
Right.
But personnel and, and environment and, you know, whatever.
Community partnerships.
So, maybe it's not, maybe the word allocation is too.
Yeah. Yeah. Maybe another word.
Okay.
How about?
So, I'm sorry.
We promote equity through structures, policies, and decisions.
And what?
Decisions. Decisions.
Promote equity.
Through structures, policies, and decisions.
Promote equity. Go ahead, Richard. So one, so the original version, promote equity in policy, practice, and allocation of resources. Another variation of that is promote equity through structures, policy, and decisions, period. And there are other variations, promote equity in policy, practice, and systems, assuming that allocation of resources is one of the fundamental systems. So it's human capital system, so is improvement systems, but I know we have issues with systems, so just trying to find some.
I think when the public sees allocation of resources, the first thing they think about is money. They're not thinking about all of the other things that resources truly are.
So if you remove the term allocation.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm not, you know.
Keep resources.
I think that's what they think. They think money as soon as they see allocation of resources.
So it's not just the word allocation. It's the whole, it's saying resources or allegation that's going to be the trigger.
No, but do you see any distinction between allocation of resources and just the term resources?
Yes. I think allocation is an immediate money sign.
Right. Okay. So if we strike, if we strike allocation and resources with the larger meaning, may, okay.
Promote equity in policy, practice, and resources?
Promote equity through or promote equity in?
Promote equity.
Oh, in, thank you.
I think either of those constructions works. Through suggests that these are the means through which we're promoting this bigger equity. In means that we're going to drive equity in all of these supposedly to have a bigger outcome. I think either of those works, just what feels closest to what you want to get across.
So if you leave the term resources out of it completely, I think we do ourselves a disservice because resources, equity in terms of ensuring that youngsters have in their hand what they need to succeed requires resources, whatever that looks like, you know? So. So you okay with?
So in or through?
I like in, but.
In's good.
Promote equity in policy, practice, and resources? The other potentially upside you have of leaving resources in is it enables you to, especially if you don't assume that it's just up to people to interpret this, that you have a responsibility of communicating what it really means. And I mean, and I'm not being silly about that, that you have an educational opportunity because you will have a number of people, we had this conversation aside, who are going to say, that means equal. That means let's divide up the dollars by kids or by zip code or figure it out and then just distribute it out, a dollar, a dollar, a dollar, a dollar, as opposed to saying equity might mean some collection of students, some parts of the city, some school, some grade level, for whatever combination of reasons, might actually need an infusion of resources beyond equal. And that's more of what equity means, at least the way I have always thought about equity. Wow.
Is that finished?
Wow.
Okay.
That's tough. That's tough.
Which?
So you have a collection, you still have the same buckets other than one, but that idea isn't going to be lost. It just comes, basically it moves into another part of what's ultimately going to be your strategic plan. And it might be the transition between your portrait of the graduate and this collection of values. And I think that makes quite a bit of sense. And it did seem to be a little bit of an orange to the apples. But the other ones didn't change in title, but I think you got very subtle and nuanced. You also became more symmetrical. We created tight constructions, much more expressions of beliefs than commitments to actions. The actions follow later. We made, we eliminated a lot of redundancy, so you don't have Waterbury Public Schools at the beginning of every single one. We don't have on behalf of every student at the end of every one. So just a quick check in, because we're interested in constant feedback. So I think we did a version of this a few weeks ago. On a, on a scale from one to five, how are you feeling about this collection of values that you just articulated for the school district? One being, we missed the mark. Five being, I feel, I feel pretty good. I know there's some tweaking left, but we have a really solid part of our strategic plan as we go forward into the year. Going to give you a few seconds to think about that, but I'm going to ask everybody to put their hand in the air so we can get a sense of how you're feeling about it. With a number, a number of fingers represents how you're feeling about it. One's low, five's high, one, two, three. Where are you feeling? Fours, 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 fives, fours. I'm sorry. Four. Okay, we have a single three. Help us understand what would have moved it to a four.
Who did the three?
Dr. Rodriguez.
I just wanted to disrupt the distribution.
Here's an outlier, we toss those out in statistics anyway. An inconvenient statistic. No, this is just useful to know, like what is it that, I think generally people are feeling good about this, and you weren't bad, Mark, it was just three, but what kind of kept it from being a four?
I just think that when we go back to the, what we're trying to define as core values for an organization, that we have to think about, especially when it comes to equity, like what is it that we're trying to accomplish or disrupt through the equity lens? And is it racial inequity? Is it social inequity? Is it economic inequity? And when we bring it down to things like resources, we forget all of that social fabric, the sociology of it all. That's where, yeah, that's just where I was stuck on that.
And all I would say is, thank you for sharing. And that will be up to you to define, like how people define that word. What will partially hinge on whether you create a narrative for how these hold together, as opposed to just putting the words out there and letting other people create that narrative. So final remarks before we hand it to the chair and the superintendent? Do you have, anything else you want to say?
No. Other than, it's for me, great to see the fact that you are so embedded in the next level of the work and under the leadership of the superintendent and obviously the team that she has assembled, I feel very good about the direction that you folks are headed in. So pleasure to be back and try to contribute as much as we can to help keep this moving in the direction that it needs to on behalf of the students. Muchas gracias.
Well, thank you very much. I think it was very productive and it's, it's a lot of work, but we're just getting started. So Dr. Rodriguez, you're right, we have to really have our eye on really implementing and making sure we understand the depth of what we're doing because this is serious work. And I really appreciate everybody's efforts and the focus really on our students and really moving the district forward. So could I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.